Do we have any public comments? Go on once, go on twice. Okay. We're going to go ahead and close public comments. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I put one potential addition on the table if anybody would like to entertain that.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll make that motion. I move we add under an addition to the agenda. Number nine would be discussion on building.
Second.
We don't need a motion on that, do we? Just additions and deletions, you don't need a motion.
So under new business, we're going to add number nine, discussion of the building. Were there any more additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I need approval of the agenda, please.
I move to approve.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the approval of the agenda is complete. Then we have our recognitions, the first annual I voted sticker contest winners. Clerk McMichael, please.
Thank you. Let's go to the podium. All right. So as you all know, 2024 is a very busy election year. One thing that I have done since I've taken over as clerk registrar is I have tried to get students involved in our elections. One thing I started a few years ago was training our high schoolers to work the elections, which we've continued this year. So if you go to vote in your polling place, you will most likely see a 16 or a 17-year-old working in the polling place, which is fabulous. They are wonderful workers. They don't get tired like those of us older folks do. And they soak everything up and they really do a great job. So when Ambrosia Melden contacted me after seeing a county in Colorado held their own I voted sticker contest, it was a no-brainer for us to take it and run with it. So thank you for sharing that idea. I contacted our local school districts and made it a contest for our local high schoolers. I want to thank the three teachers out of three schools that had their students participate. First of all, Courtney Dwyer of Dewajak Union High School, Rebecca Jaikle of Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School, and Mr. Jeff Kozinski, a teacher at Edwardsburg High School, who's also trustee at Ontua Township. We had over 70 submissions and we have a lot of talent here in Cass County. The judges had a tough job and originally we thought we'd choose one, but none of our judges chose the same winner. So we decided, we decided to award four. So you're going to have your choice of your I voted sticker at your precinct. I'm going to call the winners up one by one. They're going to get a certificate and I will point out which sticker is theirs. And we're so late, so close to election day because I wanted to have the stickers in hand. So they're actually going to leave with their stickers today. So first up, I have Ms. Emily Carlyle, who is a 2024 graduate of Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School and is also going to be a freshman at University of Michigan in the fall.
Ayes, go Blues!
Yes. Emily's submission is the top right, the I voted, that's kind of coming at you. So Emily, I have a certificate and I have plenty of stickers. If you need more for your friends and family, let me know. But thank you for participating and making our elections just a little more personal and exciting.
Thank you.
Our next winner is Anthony, or Nathan Ernst, who's there?
Andrew Ernst Casera.
Sorry.
It's okay.
His submission was the top left. And Andrew is, you're going to be a senior at Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School. And I had the pleasure of speaking with your grandpa and apparently you've won some other artistic contests before. So this was not a complete surprise, but I want to thank you very much. Yours was the favorite of the local clerks, which I think means a lot. So thank you very much. And we also here have Nola Payton. If you would like to come up. Nola submitted a digital image, which is the bottom left there. Nola, you're going to be a junior at Edwardsburg High School. So here are some stickers for you to share. Thank you, Nola. Nola is also the granddaughter of Commissioner Howie.
Which sticker was hers?
Oh, the I voted in the bottom left. Yep. And our final winner is going to be a sophomore from Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School. Her name is Brianna Nathan Keck. Hers is the bottom right. Unfortunately, she had a drive time. She's in driver's training and we all know those are tough to get into. So she couldn't switch. She will be picking up her stickers tomorrow, but congratulations to Brianna and thank you everyone for being here. Did you want to speak with them?
Yeah.
Okay. And if you have time, Ambrosia, our marketing director, would like to ask you a few questions. All right. All right. Thank you all. You guys are welcome to leave.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Maybe I missed it, but how did the township get these stickers for the residents?
I am going to get them to your local clerks. So all the local clerks agreed to use these. Yeah. So you will see them in August and in November.
So cool.
Thanks. It's wonderful. That's just beautiful.
Yeah, that's a great word to use.
All right, so moving on, we have the approval of the March 21st, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I move that we approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Second.
We have motion supporters, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the motion has been approved. Then we have our recognitions, the first annual I voted sticker contest winners. Clerk McMichael, please.
Thank you. Let's go to the podium. So as you all know, 2024 is a very busy election year. One thing that I have done since I've taken over as clerk registrar is I have tried to get students involved in our elections. One thing I started a few years ago was training our high schoolers to work the elections, which we've continued this year. So if you go to vote in your polling place, you will most likely see a 16 or a 17-year-old working in the polling place, which is fabulous. They are wonderful workers. They don't get tired like those of us older folks do. And they soak everything up and they really do a great job. So when Ambrosia Melden contacted me after seeing a county in Colorado held their own I voted sticker contest, it was a no-brainer for us to take it and run with it. So thank you for sharing that idea. I contacted our local school districts and made it a contest for our local high schoolers. I want to thank the three teachers out of three schools that had their students participate. First of all, Courtney Dwyer of Dewajak Union High School, Rebecca Jaikle of Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School, and Mr. Jeff Kozinski, a teacher at Edwardsburg High School, who's also trustee at Ontua Township. We had over 70 submissions and we have a lot of talent here in Cass County. The judges had a tough job and originally we thought we'd choose one, but none of our judges chose the same winner. So we decided, we decided to award four. So you're going to have your choice of your I voted sticker at your precinct. I'm going to call the winners up one by one. They're going to get a certificate and I will point out which sticker is theirs. And we're so late, so close to election day because I wanted to have the stickers in hand. So they're actually going to leave with their stickers today. So first up, I have Ms. Emily Carlyle, who is a 2024 graduate of Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School and is also going to be a freshman at University of Michigan in the fall. Go Blue!
Ayes, go Blues!
Yes. Emily's submission is the top right, the I voted, that's kind of coming at you. So Emily, I have a certificate and I have plenty of stickers. If you need more for your friends and family, let me know. But thank you for participating and making our elections just a little more personal and exciting.
Thank you.
Our next winner is Anthony, or Nathan Ernst, who's there?
Andrew Ernst Casera.
Sorry.
It's okay.
His submission was the top left. And Andrew is, you're going to be a senior at Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School. And I had the pleasure of speaking with your grandpa and apparently you've won some other artistic contests before. So this was not a complete surprise, but I want to thank you very much. Yours was the favorite of the local clerks, which I think means a lot. So thank you very much. And we also here have Nola Payton. If you would like to come up. Nola submitted a digital image, which is the bottom left there. Nola, you're going to be a junior at Edwardsburg High School. So here are some stickers for you to share. Thank you, Nola. Nola is also the granddaughter of Commissioner Howie.
Which sticker was hers?
Oh, the I voted in the bottom left. Yep. And our final winner is going to be a sophomore from Cassopolis Ross Beatty High School. Her name is Brianna Nathan Keck. Hers is the bottom right. Unfortunately, she had a drive time. She's in driver's training and we all know those are tough to get into. So she couldn't switch. She will be picking up her stickers tomorrow, but congratulations to Brianna and thank you everyone for being here. Did you want to speak with them?
Yeah.
Okay. And if you have time, Ambrosia, our marketing director, would like to ask you a few questions. Did you do it all?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. You guys are welcome to leave.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Maybe I missed it, but how did the township get these stickers for the residents?
I am going to get them to your local clerks. So all the local clerks agreed to use these. Yeah. So you will see them in August and in November.
So cool.
Thank you. It's wonderful. That's just beautiful.
Yeah, that's a great word to use.
All right, so finance report. As usual, the finance report is included in the packet. Does any member of the board have any questions for administration? Okay, does administration have anything they want to point out on that report? Or are you good to move forward? Good? All right. We do not have unfinished business. We're going to jump right into new business. As a reminder, we will discuss and vote on each agenda item individually. Each item will need a motion and support to be moved along to the business meeting for official vote. Are there any questions? If none, we're going to move into the first item, Cass County Planning Commission Appointments.
I'm the chair of the board of the Appointments Committee and we all met and agreed that the person that was nominated is the best fit, so.
I'll make the motion, move it forward.
I'll second.
We have motion supporters, any further discussion? I might say I looked at the application. I think the gentleman looks like a fine fit, so I'm looking forward to it as well. So if there's no further discussion, like I said, the motion's been supported. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the motion has been approved. Moving right along, we have the 911 Center and the EOC flooring.
This is coming out of Capital Projects. We met last week to discuss it. It's met the RFP requirements with the three bids being submitted and reviewed and we selected to go with, I think it was the $49,000 bid. And it's being paid for out of 911 funds.
I have a question.
Sure.
To the sheriff. Sheriff, how long has that carpeting been down since it was built or?
21 years.
Oh, well.
And the other thing, there were places where we redesigned the dispatch center so the flooring is different, so it really looks, you know how you move furniture and it makes everything look bad? And then there's the rest of the building as well, but 21 years.
When is it going to be started?
Well, once we get it approved, they'll put us on a schedule, but I want to wait till we have approval. It's not going to be approved until August meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
I like how it's going to cut down on the static for all the equipment you have in there. The static.
That's why it's so expensive, it's got a static.
I read that. That's a good.
Did I also pick up that there was some potential health risk in keeping the old stuff, right? Interesting. All right, does anyone have anything else? If none, I'll entertain a motion to move this forward.
Oh, aye.
Second.
We have a motion and support, is there any further discussion? Item three is the opioid refunding request for Narcan distribution boxes.
I serve on the advisory committee, but I'm a little bit over my head on that committee. At any rate, I would like to say that I do attend a number of webinars and these are quite prevalent throughout the state, so I'm glad we're doing this.
Yeah, so this is kind of a prototype using some like not very much materials, but materials that are on hand to see if it would be worthwhile to do it this way. Woodlands does have already a distribution box, but that was one that was done at a much greater cost. So the idea here would be to do these prototypes to see if, and then put them in some other locations because right now they're in a location that's only open during business hours. And then if these go well, we could look at doing additional ones. And I know lots of places are doing these kind of distribution boxes in lots of different kinds of locations. So we felt that the cost of this is pretty low and that it has the chance to be something that we could widely use and get stuff more around our county because our county is, you know, 50 square miles. So we'd like to see more Narcan boxes around. And so our committee unanimously scored that it should be approved and moved forward by the Board of Commissioners. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. But the Narcan is already available free of cost, so it's just building these boxes so that when we can keep them stocked and see how they go.
I moved opioid request forward.
All right, we got motion supporters, any further discussion on this topic?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's been approved. Number four, we have the Material Management Interlocal Agreement Amendment.
Yeah, so I can talk about this. So we've previously brought several different things with materials management to the Board of Commissioners. One of the original interlocal agreement being one of them. And then a contract actually for Southwest Michigan Planning Commission to carry it out. We had a meeting about, I think it was about two weeks ago now, where we were doing some planning and actually it was at the Polkagan Community Center. And we had some good conversation while we were there and realized that, you know, there was a gap here. And I think the Polkagan Band of the Potawatomi Indians had some really good professionals that we thought would be of very big value to the interlocal agreement. And they expressed an interest in wanting to participate. And so we reached out to Eagle and said, hey, you know, this was, we think, missed in terms of what the state was looking for. Sought permission to be able to do this. And so this would provide, the agreement essentially remains the same, but provides a permanent seat on the Materials Management Board for the Polkagan Band of the Potawatomi Indians.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Does this change the letters we just send to the neighboring counties that we weren't joining courses with?
No.
If anybody else has anything, I'll make the motion to move it forward.
I'll second.
We have a motion and support, is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's been approved. Thank you, Matt. Moving along, we've got number five, the animal control vehicle replacement. Who would like to speak to this?
Good evening. The two vehicles that I'm asking to replace basically are over nine and 11 years old. The 11-year-old truck is currently out of service because of extensive electrical repairs were going to exceed the value of the truck. The nine-and-a-half-year-old truck has become, within the last year, a nickel-and-dime maintenance headache, having to utilize used electronic components because new components, primarily the engine control module, were not available through Ford. Sourced out local bids as well as the state contract bids as well. Local bids were anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000 higher than the local bids, which are supplied with the contracts, as well as utilizing our local vendors for outfitting the trucks and our equipment. And that are, the equipment, one equipment vendor is also a current GSA contract vendor.
So you mentioned that one vehicle's out of service because of electrical issues and the other one's becoming a maintenance burden, right?
Correct.
I think they're 11 and nine years old.
Yes. Normally in past, we've kept the trucks for a service life of eight years, but since they've switched over to the aluminum bodies, they're not rusting out like the older trucks are. But the internal components are what's becoming a challenge for daily services.
I move, we move it forward.
I'll second.
We have a motion and support, is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing, go ahead.
So on the F-150, is that, is 150 sturdy enough to continually have the animal control box in it?
Most boxes that we have currently on the trucks, they're constructed out of wood. They have wood frames and aluminum skins. What we've seen in past utilizing that wood frame on a second vehicle, we've had issues where the woods actually rotted out from cleaning and sanitizing to where we almost lost the box at one point because it wasn't able to stay bolted down, so.
I mean, just as far as the suspension on that, it's not going to wear on the 150.
No. No, the boxes that are designed for those F-150s won't exceed the capacity of it.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, so again, we've got a motion and support. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion's been approved. All right, I think we're on number six, the BSNA cloud mitigation, excuse me, cloud migration.
So I'll talk on this one. Jody has been involved in this process too, but she is actually on vacation in Spain, I think. So I told her I thought I could handle it. So BSNA is the main ERP system that we use here at the county. So it drives our general ledger software. It's what we utilize for accounts payable to pay the bills. It includes cash receipting for any monies that we're taking in. And I believe there's some principal residence exemption parts of it, equalization. I mean, so basically it's integral. And I believe there's some principal residence exemption, parts of it, equalization. I mean, so basically it's integral to everything we do here in terms of our financials. I've talked about this, I think, in previous months in my report, but the current implementation of BSNA, which is their kind of .net system, it's kind of built on old software. It's been something that's been around for quite a few years. BSNA is actually migrating away from that entirely. Now, they haven't given any set kind of drop dead, you know, deadlines in terms of it's going to be gone in three years or five years, you know. They haven't really ironed that out. But what they have announced is that for our, the existing software that they have out there, so the kind of local storage solution options, they are implementing no new features. It's only on a maintenance schedule at this point, so if something comes up that goes wonky, they're fixing it. But for anything new that they're trying to do, it's all going into the BSNA cloud system. Obviously, the cloud system changes how we operate quite a bit. You know, instead of having software running locally, that's all done actually through remote servers. So it's very, you know, obviously internet-driven. Kind of why, as we've looked at the historic courthouse, we focused a lot on internet connectivity and making sure that was acceptable. But it does save some, you know, long-term maintenance options with respect to having that cloud service. So, you know, we're not responsible for the uptime on the servers. BSNA handles that. You know, they guarantee, I believe it's roughly about a 99.9% uptime. They maintain all the data and all the storage of all of that. Obviously, it's our data, so, you know, we have access to it. But we're not responsible for the storage, you know, locally of those sorts of things either. So it actually eliminates the need for us to maintain those local servers and, you know, their software. I know that one of our SQL database licenses, actually, I think it comes up in '26, I think, is the year we would have to, we would have to install a new one. And that's on the order of about anywhere from eight to $15,000 to do that upgrade. So, you know, we started looking at it and had some conversations with BSNA. We didn't want to do this a couple of years ago when it was like kind of the first round of them. We definitely didn't want to get involved with that. We wanted to give it some time. BSNA representatives have basically said that the idea here is they're trying to work with counties and local municipalities to lock in agreements to be able to chart out what those schedules look like. The advantage for us is that if you commit to the agreement and sign it now, there is a bit of an upfront cost to kind of reserve that spot. But you get a choice to kind of pick when you do it. So it's not something that's going to come two months from now potentially. We've been looking somewhere in 2025, or we could push it out even to 2026. And the other advantage to the agreement is that they lock the pricing for a period of two years after your implementation. We've seen, I think, over the last couple of years, annual price increases as they've done it. So when you're on the system, they guarantee the price fluctuations based on the pricing here don't change more than I think it's the consumer price index essentially, so inflation. But if you're not a current subscriber, those pricing does fluctuate a little bit more than that. So I think it was a 5% increase last year and maybe 3% the year before. So part of the idea here was, you know, to look at potentially locking in that current pricing. They said it would go up probably after August. They were anticipating again a roughly 4% to 5% increase. And then working obviously closely with our elected officials, department heads, on what that implementation schedule actually looks like. It's kind of challenging, you know, working through obviously tax seasons and audit cycles and things like that to figure out what's a good time. I don't know that there's ever necessarily like a, hey, this month of time, we don't do anything. I mean, obviously that doesn't happen. But trying to avoid maybe some of those big, big times where like, hey, nothing can happen here, like we need to have everything in place and working. So we don't know what that timing is exactly yet. We're also looking at, you know, getting some demos set up for all the various modules. I know we're working with BSNA officials on that. We had some high-level overview early on, but to get a chance to work with all of our staff that is in these systems every day to say, hey, here's a demo of what the cloud looks like. You know, there's differences in terms of appearance. Some of the functionality is a little bit different. But it does actually allow more integrations with other things that aren't possible now. There's additional reporting functions. And wherever you have internet access, you'd be able to utilize multi-factor authentication to access BSNA. So it reduces reliance on things like VPN, stuff like that. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, that the costs for the BSNA cloud are certainly higher. We pay on average, I believe it's in the ballpark of about $25,000-ish right now for licensing for the cloud system. It works out to, let me double check here, $184,000. So it's a pretty significant increase. But the challenge is that it's not something that is going to be optional. They're going to require it. It's really more of a determination, I think, tonight as to, do we want to, you know, try to lock in pricing for a little bit and, you know, chart out a course now? Or is it in our better interest to wait and say, you know what, wait till they drag us kicking and screaming and saying, you got to do it now? I think there are a lot of great, great things with the cloud system that can help. I know there's some concerns too about integration with local units, especially as it pertains to tax databases and things like that. What we've been told is that, we had an instance last year, I believe, where one of the local units actually moved to the cloud. And we had some struggles in getting some of the communication between the cloud and the local implementation of software to work. What they basically said is that it was harder in reverse. So since the county was on the .net solution and the local unit was on the cloud, that's what created some challenges. They said in the opposite direction, it's not as difficult. So if you have the, if the county has the cloud solution and local units still haven't transitioned yet, it's a much easier premise to be able to import and export those things.
I haven't independently verified that, but. I think we should do it now and lock in the price because nothing's getting cheaper.
Yeah, so it would be essentially the cost now. You'd be looking at $35,000 now to execute the agreement. And then that remaining total includes upgrade fees. We actually are adding two modules that we don't have currently. That would include, let me pull it up here. Purchase orders. We require purchase orders under our purchase policy, but it's all driven really either by paper. It varies across departments. So moving to a system that has purchase orders actually integrates right with our AP system. So that purchase order gets attached right to the accounts payable item that gets entered, so we can track those things much easier. It gives us some more flexibility to kind of drive the use of purchase orders across the county. And then there's a human resources module we're really excited about that expands a lot. Right now, payroll's really about the extent of what we have in the online service where you can go and check, you know, your pay stubs, things like that, leave banks. The human resources module enables a lot of different things, so a lot of digital records, you know, things like that that we're able to do that we aren't able to do right now. So it does add three, two new modules. And I believe we would have accounts receivable as well as the other one. So that would be billings. So if we're doing invoices for things to people, which we actually do more often now than we have in the past, it gives us a system where everybody can log in. You can create an invoice, send it out, and then that gets tracked in a system. Now, a lot of it across different offices, if they're doing that, would be driven by like things like spreadsheets. And so it's kind of manual processes in terms of, hey, I need to build a folder or have something on my desktop, a calendar reminder, hey, did I get this paid, tracking it.
Makes my job easier also for my other job, so where we can see previous offenses and things like that on the property, make it a lot easier.
Yeah, so I mean, there certainly are some advantages in that regard too, and tracking overtime and stuff like that. So I know, I know it comes with a cost, but we're going to have to do it at some point. And by doing this now, we're going to guarantee pricing for the initial term and the two years after, and we can still chart out when it is. If we push it off to 2026, that's fine. It's not a problem, but this would guarantee our spot in line.
Yeah, I think you've done a pretty good job of covering it. I mean, and I had a couple of questions, but you answered them specifically. The fact that, you know, when you implement a new system like this, there's always some sort of level of risk. But considering that we're not the first wave that we're waiting after it's already been implemented in other places, it kind of mitigates some of those risks. And then the balance, right? You said we paid $35,000 to potentially log in this price to avoid any increase, but then we can figure out what we're going to do going forward. The increase going from $25,000 a year to $184,000 is quite a bit, but we don't really have the same BSNA, what they're doing.
No, and I think when you couple that with some of the reduced reliance on, you know, I mean, servers last only so long. You got to replace those. You've got power usage that comes with those. You've got, you know, the data backup and the cybersecurity stuff that goes into it, you know, losing, you know, removing some of that, I think, does have some pretty significant value.
And I heard it's a lot less chance of people hacking it and holding things hostage.
As a matter of fact, I think we've heard in a lot of cases that when you look at those cloud-based storage things, when people have been, had cyber attacks, it's the share points and those cloud storage areas where they weren't able to get to. It's the local stores that you have issues with. So this does mitigate a lot of that risk too.
So it could be possibly a savings in the long run.
Get hit with one of those, there's a lot that goes, that's pretty costly.
If we do agree to $35,000 and then we have the balance that we have to pay, but we don't have to technically put this into effect until 2026, can we do something to kind of break that cost down so that we don't get so much bill at the end?
Yeah, I mean, there's ways to look at it from a budgetary standpoint, to potentially look at splitting that across years, you know, or at this rate, you know, if we, if we had decided, you know, and again, I think we're still working through these conversations with everyone that, you know, can we reasonably do it next year or does that following year make sense? If we did that, I mean, we're not even looking at putting into the budget for this next year anyway at that point. I know it's deferring costs into the future, but it does, it doesn't necessarily impact the bottom line for the next fiscal year if we did that.
Well, I have no further questions. Does anyone else from the board?
Yeah, a couple of things. Like, it does look like there's a payment schedule on page five of seven. And then also, it says the travel expenses. Now, we can expect them to be here for training, and how about installation?
Installation will be an interesting one. I mean, I would think, we're still working through how that all works. Because obviously, being in the cloud, there won't really be any equipment installation, but there'll obviously be a transition period. We'll have, you know, training that I would assume takes place before and after. But with, and I guess real quick, circling back to the payment schedule, a lot of that is tied with respect to the activation of those modules. So like that second payment is invoiced upon activation of the modules. The other one is when they have the upgrades completed. The final one is after activation of the new system. So they're going to do it a little bit in phases. So basically, what we have now will come up and then they'll implement the additional modules that we aren't using now, because there's no data to convert. It's just adding it on to the package. And then they have the training. So my guess is probably with the site, they'll spin it up, you know, import our data, you know, make sure, do their own testing, make sure things are working right.
Well, that's what we want.
And then we would have the training and then we would have a period where we would move from our existing system to that system and wind down, you know, our current operating system. And the travel should be minimal. BSNA is based in Lansing, or Lansing, right around the Lansing area, Bath, Michigan, I think.
Oh, okay.
You know, I don't anticipate a huge expense from them. It's not like they're flying somebody in from, you know, California or something. They're right here local.
Good to know.
One of the reasons why I think almost all the municipalities in Michigan use BSNA is they're a local vendor, to the state at least.
Thank you.
It's user-friendly too.
I'll make the motion to push it forward.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in support. Is there any further discussion?
Just, I'm really nervous about that amount. You know, that's quite a bit more.
It is. I mean, when you look at, I would say this, right, when you look at some of the other, you know, cloud or, you know, storage solutions like that. I mean, OnBase is a primary example. Some of those OnBase implementations, you know, we're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, marks to. The unfortunate thing with some of these technology things is that they don't come cheap. But I think they do have the opportunity to be able to enhance operations, make things work more smoothly, enable ways to interact with the system that we haven't had before. I mean, even just being able to log in and do something, you know, over the internet from, you know, computer, not having to worry about VPNs, things like that, you know, is a really great feature. I'm obviously sure you're concerned with cost. I wish I was coming in and saying it's a much smaller cost, but.
No, I don't know if you addressed this or not. So it would just be your office that would have access to this program? Yeah, your, your office?
No, 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 no. Everybody at the county touches this, in every building, in some capacity. Some of it's going to be a little bit different from one area to the next. So like obviously, a good example is like with general ledger. We're working in that every day. Elected officials, department heads are probably looking at that maybe to pull reports from time to time based on, you know, what their budget is. Or obviously a budget season when they're inputting budgets. Otherwise, you know, we're probably doing a little more extensive work there. AP, everybody has, you know, bills that they're putting in, so that's obviously again at every building. HR would be a little more exclusive to, to potentially our office, but I don't know exactly. There may be some component of some of the initial entries and, you know, when hiring, depending on how hiring is set up, that could be a little bit democratized too, depending on how we approach that.
Okay, as long as they would have access.
Oh, yeah, everybody. It would be, and it's unlimited users, you know. So the county, we determined and we would work obviously again with elected officials and department heads, who needs access to what modules? How do we do this and manage that appropriately?
Chair, your own?
I could ask a question. The migration to the cloud is the lump sum of the 185 that you said, or?
Thirty-five is the initial, the initial payment. Let's see, they have, let's see if they have it broken down here. So the cost summary, 114 is essentially the, the cost of the modules. There's $25,000 covers the cost of the implementation of the new modules. There's about $13,000 set aside for training, which would take place over about, it's like 11 days or so.
Then on top of that, we'll have the annual fee, right? Isn't it on top of that that we have the annual fee? I want to point that out because I kind of remember when we first switched over to BSNA. That first year, you have that big cost for switching over and the annual fee of $140,000. So that first year, it's a big, big.
That's what I was just going to ask about.
Yeah, the big migration plus the annual fee. We did this back in 2019. I don't remember experiencing, we, it caught us all off guard. That we also had to pay the annual fee that same year that we had just switched over to BSNA.
And you mentioned that 2026 is when they're going to eliminate their, they're just going to completely shift over to the cloud, right?
I'm not 100% sure. They haven't necessarily announced a date yet. You know, I think part of it is, is their capacity to be able to deal with all of the data migration and things. So they've been kind of working in tandem with local units to kind of schedule these things up and work on it. My guess is what they basically said was when they get to a point where they have a number of the migrations ready and a majority of communities in that, at that area, then they'll decide on a mandatory date of transferring essentially and say, this is the time. You got to get it done now. And we're, we're trying to avoid that mad scramble too of like having to rush at the very end to do it as well.
Yeah, I don't really know any other way around this, so. Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, and I guess I would note too that I would classify this, and the reason there isn't other quotes, is that, you know, BSNA really is, in this example, a sole source provider. We really, it would be a nightmare to try to move to, you know, a solution from say Tyler Technology or something. Not only has our feedback on some of the other software providers not always been the greatest, but with those other solutions, we're dealing with local units that all have BSNA. So moving to some other provider would be a nightmare to try to deal with.
I'd say I have one more thing. The Michigan Association of County Treasurers, we've invited BSNA to our next conference. I'm sure there's other associations that are doing the same, because we really need to find out the details of when, why, and. We're all in the same boat, but nobody's necessarily overjoyed about this cost, so. It is something that we are sharing our.
It's, it is frustrating, right? Because I mean, I think like I look on the surface at, you know, the capabilities that it has and the benefits they provide, and it's fantastic. Costs don't make me happy, I can tell you that. I'm not floored with, with that, or I'm not excited about that. But, you know, it's, again, I think for us, it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when.
We don't have a choice. They've set it in their literature. We don't have a choice.
Another thing that's kind of frustrating too, I just couldn't jump in, but you can't even add any new modules. So like, there's like a desire for HR, you know, immediately to be able to track all that information. They won't even let us add it on.
Existing.
Yeah.
They, they won't allow you to do it.
They're putting adding new ones to this, and it's. So they're putting adding new ones to this, and it's, it's just
One thing I forgot to note, because I think it'll be helpful for the financial side of things, it may help the treasurer's office, it certainly will help our finance director and me, is that when BSNA was originally set up, for whatever reason, it was set up as a cash basis sort of accounting. And I guess I won't get too into the weeds, but it creates a lot of challenges for us in that way, because the county operates on an accrual basis. So one of the things that they've done, and they said they've actually had multiple counties that have done this and local municipalities, is that we would convert our system to an accrual basis when we do this. So that will actually reduce a lot of manual journal entries and things that we end up doing, particularly at the end of the year, where it's like, oh, that cost goes back to the last year. Right now, the way the AP system works is there's no way to say, post this as of September, you put it in now, and then somebody has to go back in and do a manual entry to move that back. And so there, and there's a lot of it that goes on. I mean, hundreds of entries, maybe even more. I mean, it's significant.
One month, I had four hundred line journal entries removed.
Yeah, so I mean, it's gonna save a lot of that, too. You know, and it's something that they said is a very simple part of this process. They've got experience doing that, and so I'm very excited for that, because it will save a lot of time, and make it a lot easier come audit time as well to make sure things are right.
Do we already have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
We don't, right? Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's been approved. Number seven, we have the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendments. Do we, do we want to point out on this?
I guess I can just quickly run through. So the first item is convention facilities. The budget was actually lower than what it ended up being, I think. I think it was based on estimates that was actually low, so we're actually increasing that and then reducing fund balance allocation, because I believe with this one, there's a
Revenue.
a pass-through, correct? Also?
It's revenue that comes in, and then we have to, RJ might be familiar with this, he said, we're giving forty percent back to Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health, so we have to take forty percent of the revenues and fish them over, but the revenues have increased, and the expenditure has decreased.
Yes.
Do you remember when that changed?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Towards the beginning of the year. I think they made that change from us giving fifty percent of the revenue to Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health down to forty percent. But anyway, the revenues also increased just how much we were getting this year. So it actually reduces fund balance, which was a good thing.
Yeah. The other two, I mean, I guess I'll just go by category here. Probate court, the state changed judge salary after the budget was set, so we had to, the budget adjustment accounts for that. And then I think there was more in that one-line item. We, there was an original request for more attorney fees, but it was reduced to assist with the budget. However, attorney fees are being incurred, and the court's required to appoint attorneys in certain circumstances, so that increases. It's not a huge difference, that's roughly about nine thousand. There's an adjustment for patrol vehicles and installation kits. The class comp study that was approved, we did a budget adjustment to account for that. So in a lot of cases, if there's a decision that gets made, and we didn't have it budgeted, but the board approves it, we'll bring those budget amendments later. So that's the case with class comp, as well as the dispatch room AC. The building and grounds repairs items for battery placements over at the nine-one-one center. And then for household hazardous waste, this one is getting ahead of that event. So we try to anticipate with household hazardous waste what we're gonna see in terms of costs, but we never really know exactly what people are gonna bring in terms of chemicals and things like that. And obviously, these sorts of events are great for making sure those chemicals don't end up in our, you know, on the side of streets and in people's backyards and in our water systems. But there's obviously a cost that comes with disposing of them properly. So we looked at what was in there in terms of funding available, and I believe it's in September. So
Yeah, it is.
So in anticipation of getting ahead of that, that budget adjustment, make sure that when we get to the event, we'll have enough in the fund to be able to cover the costs for all the household hazardous waste we would anticipate for there, too. I think that's the bulk of it, or the summary of it.
All right, and that's an overall increase of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty.
Yes, yeah, because the first item actually was a reduction in fund balance allocation.
Does anyone else have any questions? If
I'll make the motion move forward.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and support. There's no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's been approved.
Okay.
Seems that's number eight, discussion of the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
So these are, these are hot off the presses. We just passed these out tonight. We've got a couple of things here for you to try to distill it down a little bit easier. So the first two pages that you'll see, there is a real high-level overview. So it provides for the estimated revenues for the general fund by category, so you can see those broken down at the very top. And then it goes into appropriations there at the bottom, broken down by department. So you can see activity from fiscal year twenty-three, activity through this year, the amended budget from this year, and then what the requested budget was for fiscal year twenty-five. So we don't have attached a recommended budget. Part of that is, is I think when we talked about the workshop, the idea was to look at having those departments and elected offices being able to come in and say, here's why we asked for this, and then us being able to utilize that as an opportunity to take that feedback, what we get from the board at that meeting, and determine, okay, what, you know, was everybody good with that, are there changes we need to make? And then obviously, we'll go through, you know, as well, and double-check numbers and figure out, you know, what do we think? Bottom line is, based on the requested budget, the overall fund balance allocation would be roughly, with no changes, three-point-one-eight-three million for next fiscal year. With our current fund balance, that would leave us with roughly an estimated unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year of roughly about three-point-five million dollars. I would anticipate that we will, we'll see, as we work through the budget process, there will probably be some changes. This is actually a lower number than what we started at last year, and not that I anticipate going through the same exact process as last year, of course, but, you know, we'll have some good discussions. I think going about it through the way that we're talking about gives us a great opportunity to work with each department and each office. What are the needs? Why are these changes here? What's changing year over year? And having, giving the board an opportunity to really understand what each office is working on, where these numbers come from, and determining, does this make sense, or do we need to see some changes? So I think the ultimate goal, I think, with this right now would be to look at trying to set a date for when the board would like to move forward with the workshop. And then the last, the last page here, it's about fifty-six pages long, so there's a lot there, but that last set is the full budget with all line items listed. And again, same premise where you've got the twenty-three amended budget, twenty-two, twenty-three activity, our amended budget for this year, our activity through the year thus far, and then the requested budget for fiscal year twenty-five.
Thing is, you should send an email out for sometime after the fair to gauge all the board, to see
Okay. That was part of it, too, is getting an idea, I guess, as to timeline, you know, what the board wanted to look at. Obviously, with the fiscal year budget, it's an essential task of approving that prior to the end of the current fiscal year. So you have to have a new budget adopted before October first. We can't continue operations afterward. So, you know, I mean, I think we've got time now, you know, with this. I think we're on a similar trajectory to where we were last year. You know, we could look at approval, depending on how everything works out, in that August timeframe. You've got September. We've utilized special meetings in the past where necessary, so
I'd shoot for the week after the fair, somewhere close That's the one?
That's election week.
After, after, yeah, after the fair it is. The week
And we would have BOC meetings second and third week in August.
You don't want to have that.
But that's not to say that, you know, and I think the other thing to keep in mind with the workshop is that, you know, we're gonna have a pretty, we're gonna try to, try to schedule things out as much as we can to a lot, certain time, because we don't want to have, this could easily, if we didn't have, you know, some time constraints, you know, could turn into an all-day sort of affair. I mean, I think, maybe if we started during the day, I don't know the availability of people to do that, but if you started, say, at like one o'clock, try to make sure that we can get through this and, you know, hopefully get done, you know, and it still takes several hours. But some budgets, obviously, are gonna take less time than others. You know, bigger offices, bigger departments are gonna take a little more time, smaller offices are gonna be a little bit quicker. That might be ten minutes. Another office might be twenty-five minutes. But to try to chart out a schedule and stick to that the best we can.
So we want to try to shoot for the week of the twelfth?
We could do that. That's right. Jen is off.
Nineteenth.
Let's wait for Monica for the elections. She's the most important person there that week.
Can everybody, including the electeds, take two seconds and check the week of the nineteenth, if you have availability or not?
The week of September?
August nineteenth.
August nineteenth.
We have to approve it by the end of September.
It does, it does put us a bit of a time crunch, too. I mean, depending on how that would work, right? Because, I mean, the key is, if we were shooting to have the budget approved, say, at the regular meeting in September, you'd want to have, you know, you have to have at least ten days of a notice published in a local paper for a public hearing for the fiscal year budget. So that does, I mean, that's not to say we can't, you know, have a special meeting to adopt the budget at a later time, but...
What about Wednesday, Tuesday? Wednesday, August fourteenth?
Jen's off. The night of the sixteenth, she just said.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that.
Sorry, my first name was real confusion.
Okay.
And next week's probably too soon to try to sneak it in.
What about August eighth?
That's election week?
Yeah, we'll be canvassing. Okay.
Next week?
Next week.
Can anybody not make next week work? Fridays don't go for me besides, I mean, anything else next week is good except for Friday?
I'm, I'm, I'm good that week. Yeah, I'm okay that week. The twenty-third through twenty-fourth.
What date are you telling me?
Right.
We're trying for next week, if nobody has any conflicts.
You're only available Friday the next week.
Our building is closed on Thursday.
Yeah, building's closed Thursday.
What about the twenty-sixth?
We'd have to go to another building.
On Friday? Well, yeah, he can do the Friday.
Twenty-fourth, a possibility?
Planning commission, right?
Twenty-second, July.
I mean, it's probably okay if you miss planning commission to get the budget stuff done.
I have no mic on. Twenty-second.
It's a published year.
Is the, is the week of
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth?
Is the week of the fair fully out for everybody?
I'm running a fair booth.
Oh, okay.
If you've got kids showing
I mean, I guess, I guess the thing would be is that, like, I guess the week of the twelfth, or, no, let's see, you're out, how many? Nineteenth through
Sixteenth.
Okay.
The fifth is completely out for you?
August fifth?
Mm-hmm.
It's not ideal. Actually, no. Now that we have early voting, we have to haul everything back here that day.
Twelve August.
Well, what can we do at the twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Because he won't be there.
I will be available next week.
I guess the thing is, is that
What's wrong with the twelfth through the sixteenth of August?
Yeah, I mean
June of the ninth through sixteen.
Damn, I keep forgetting.
I mean, and I could take notes, obviously. I mean, so, I mean, I think even though
Why don't we just plan for the twenty-second?
Jen would be out, we could make that work.
Of August?
Yeah, it's over a month away. I wish we would make the twenty-second work.
That's my birthday, come on.
Happy birthday to you, Agnes Humkayes.
Happy birthdays today, we'll be there at twenty-second.
I mean, the biggest thing would be, just to keep in mind, is that probably with that, and we've done this in years past, so it's not, you know, not, not way out of whack, but, I mean, we could make sure to, if we needed to, hold a special meeting for budget approval. I mean, as long as everybody's good with that.
Just put a timeline together that shows roughly what it would look like.
Okay.
So we all have an idea.
Twenty-second would be great.
Twenty-second, okay.
Okay, well, the August twenty-second.
Yes.
If it's He's not in town on the twenty-third, but he's good with it. It can be approved. You're not August? September fifth.
Yeah.
But the Democratic National Convention?
Stop it.
It is a tick.
So what time? What time on August twenty-second?
I wish that we start early.
Yeah, earlier the better.
It's something that's available.
He's gone, too.
Yeah, during conference, twenty-one, twenty-two, and I come back on the twenty-third.
About Tuesday the twentieth?
Well, we can catch up with him.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem. Oh, we gotta pick a date.
Yeah. It's Tuesday the twentieth, work?
Yep.
Yeah.
What time will we want to start?
Is it no? No.
No?
We can go back to the twenty-second.
I can, because I've got a termination trial that day that we published notice for, so
Oh, okay.
How about a Saturday? Let's just pick a Saturday.
Great.
I mean, we should all be able to make Saturday work.
Yeah.
If we did the twenty-second, Jeff, you couldn't phone in or something? How long is it gonna take?
I would call, we meet with him prior to that.
We could look at that.
Somebody.
Who wasn't available on twenty-second?
Oh, I think the sheriff's out of town and Jeff's at conference.
Oh, the sheriff's out of town?
No, he's just joking.
Oh, he's just joking?
He's out that day.
I think he was being honest about being out of town.
But I'll stay here, we're doing it, but I, I just, like, yeah, whatever.
Why don't we just push it to Friday that week?
Twenty-third? Your, your conference this week, Jeff?
I'll be driving, coming home that morning, so
We'll make him the last part of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm a small part of this, so
Okay. What time do we want to start?
We'll push yours to the end.
Noon?
One o'clock.
I would say we start early. That way we can just get into it, have the whole day in case it runs long.
Nine AM?
The twenty-third, Friday the
Nine AM's not early.
Right?
Not early.
I agree. I believe so. I'd want to do it.
I would run Saturday, seven thirty, five AM.
Seven, yeah. Let's roll. I'm all good. The earlier the better.
Eight AM.
Eight AMs.
There it is.
And then if, if anybody has any, they needed lead for, let Matt or Jen know, so we can schedule a little earlier to talk about your specific budget.
Yeah.
What's gonna be the timeframe that we can choose a slot?
That Friday, the twenty-third, at eight AM.
Yeah, we could get along. What is going to be the timeframe that we can choose a slot that day? Yeah, why don't we do something? What's the range?
I would say we'll just have Matt throw something together and send everybody.
We'll put together a rough, rough outline.
And then if there's a problem, you guys can say, I can't make that happen.
Because, I mean, we kind of have, I mean, I guess I'll put it this way, right? It's like, you know, obviously, we go through budget meetings with everyone. So we have a rough idea, you know, generally speaking, which departments, you know, are more likely to be able to take a shorter timeframe.
I understand that. We have hearings, so I want to be able to
Yeah.
just have hearings, so I want to know, like, what's the range of possibilities? That's all I was trying to find out. What would be best for you? Well, I don't, it's not all about me. I'm just, like, trying to find out what's the length of this meeting, so that I know.
I would say
What she's just saying is a nine to five?
It's probably gonna be eight to noon, eight to one, I would imagine.
I would imagine eight to one.
Great, thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on this? We're set for the twenty-third at eight AM.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep. Yep.
Does this need a motion?
Make a motion to something, budget meeting on the twenty-third of August at eight AM?
Abort.
The budget workshop.
Or workshop, sorry.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion's been approved. Onto our last item for the evening. We have a discussion regarding the cleaning of the buildings.
Yeah, so I guess just an update, obviously, following the last regular meeting. We've been working to try to chart out the next course. There's a few options we can think of. We obviously don't have a lot of time, so we're looking at roughly about a two-week[1787.86] There's a few options we can think of, we obviously don't have a lot of time, so we're looking at roughly about a, a two-week window. We did reach out to a couple vendors that I had contact for to say, hey, are you available for, like, a short-term option? You know, just if, even if it was just cleaning a central public space, does that work? Haven't heard back yet, we've discussed the idea of, you know, and some of this obviously carries longer timeframe, so if we were trying to hire temporary employees, for example, I don't know exactly if we did that internally, how quick we could turn around and find, you know, two, three people that would be willing to do more of a temporary thing, you know, maybe, maybe we could find someone quickly, maybe it would take, sometimes it takes a little while to hire people. We could look at potentially, you know, whether there's a temp agency out there, as long as they could meet background check requirements, and consistent employees to be able to make that work. I mean, there's some significant challenges, I mean, the other thing is, is that part of our agreement with our previous vendor, or current vendor, I should say, rather, was that the county doesn't actually provide any cleaning supplies, the vendor does that. So when you look at things like toilet bowl cleaner, toilet brushes, you know, those sorts of things, we really don't have anything. You know, we actually realized that, you know, really for us, all we have is paper towel, toilet paper, and trash bags.
Well, I think that's way too much in the weeds, our job as commissioners is the budget. So, we paid $200,000 a year for the previous, or our current vendor, so if we're gonna do a temporary, do all the above of what you said, reach out to the ones that's been advised to you to go seek for bids, go to the temp agencies also, bring that to us with a budget, a dollar amount of itemized, not itemized, but like, say, $225,000 divided by how long we need them, that's our budget, give that to the department heads, here's your budget, tell us what you want to do, because us telling them cleaning supplies, where to clean, who to clean, how to clean, that's not our business. Our, our business is the money, here's how much you have, tell us what you want to do, and we'll avoid all that drama that we had for the last four years that I've been here, that is none of my business, who cleans what and where. Here's the money, make it happen.
That's fair. I mean, and, and we were working on, and we sent out an email this week, you know, working with offices and departments to understand, you know, in terms of the cleaning that we've done, did we have everything captured properly? That's going to be obviously part of any RFP that we're working on very quickly, is, you know, is there anything missing? Is the frequency of cleaning correct, you know, those sorts of things, so we can chart that out.
Not our business.
Potentially come up with some options for, you know, what would be, like, if we were doing public spaces and bathrooms?
Not our business.
What, what, what would that be, if we were looking at, you know, kind of a, that plus, you know, what, any critical areas, you know, where employees are going to be throwing away food, you know, things like that, that we know we need to hit, what does that look like? And then obviously, what's the full service option? And there's a number of things we could look at, too, so one of the things is, is we've had a countywide contract for a vendor to do everything. Does that make the most sense? Would it make more sense to contract that out, building by building?
Carol had a question.
Yeah. Yeah, Judge, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I don't want to interrupt if you're just...
Go ahead, please.
Okay. I appreciate that you're saying, you know, all you care about is the money, but...
I didn't say that, that was my words, I said that, yeah, that's not my word.
Your role, whatever, whatever your words were, I don't want to repeat them, but I appreciate that you say that. But what I'm looking at is, we've got nine business days to figure something out. And I understand we don't have the traffic in our building that we had pre-COVID, but we do have traffic in our building, and we need basic health and sanitation, things taken care of, things like our toilets cleaned, and our feminine bags in the bathroom stalls where feminine waste is disposed of, taken out trash, or foods thrown in by both members of the public and staff, taken care of, or we're going to have a lot of big problems in terms of sanitation and health, and so I, I just am imploring that this has to be taken very seriously, because nine business days is not very long. And when we're talking about getting bids from all these different people and doing all these different things, I don't know what the solution is, and I'm not trying to tell you all your business, I'm just saying, if come August 1, the solution is we've got no cleaners, I don't know how long we'll be able to keep our building open, because I can't let the public come into a building and invite them to court and say, well, nobody's cleaning our toilets, nobody's emptying the feminine waste products, nobody's doing all of these things.
So what's your, what's your solution to it?
Uh, well, again, that's not my lane to have the solution, because you all contract with people for this, I don't, but we're getting down to the wire here, so... I mean, like, you know, I did laughingly last week say, well, I guess I'll be cleaning bathrooms come August 1, but I'm not going to handle people's waste and stuff, just to ensure public can come into my building, because I don't feel that's my job either.
We just had our, our decision made on that last Thursday, so to, to do anything, that's...
There was a solution.
Just, just the way it is, that's the way it is, so we have to, we have to do what we have to do, you know, for August, so Matt, we, I would hope you would get on it right away and say...
We're working on it, because part of the idea...
There's some time to bring it up to you.
Ain't no time, we can have a special meeting for that, if it's that and this, because that is important, you know, that's bad.
I mean, it's certainly possible, you know, feelings as they may be, like, trying to look at, you know, even with our existing vendor, is there some scaled-back version that might be possible, I mean, we're, we're, you're trying to explore everything.
So say, nobody, you put out the bids, none of the vendors, nobody bids on it, nobody wants the job for that couple week or couple month period.
Well, we're gonna do an RFP, but RFPs generally carry a 30-day turnaround, so I guess that's what I wanted to give everybody an update on tonight, is that, you know, this, we've had several meetings on this, you know, this week, trying to figure out what to do, and there's not a lot of good choices, so, you know, we're, the next step is, you know, trying to coordinate with temp agencies to figure out, because even hiring, I don't think by the time we post it and get somebody, we would, probably wouldn't have enough time to hire people.
Do you have to have it posted, too? Isn't there required, someone's telling you have to post it?
RFPs generally, we would do 30 days.
I had sent you an email with two more cleaning services on top of the first one.
Yeah.
The one, and we can talk about it later.
One's my family member, I just want you to know before it comes out.
No, that's okay.
Can't do that one.
Well, I guess my question, too, is how are we not violating our purchasing policy? If we're just gonna randomly start, we, if I find a cleaner I like, and I propose it to you, and she finds a cleaner she likes, and they find a cleaner they like, how are we not doing exactly what we're worried about is being done? I guess is my question, like, and I'm sorry, you know, I know I'm late to this party, because I wasn't here this week, last week, I was out of town, but I don't know that I could have said anything that would have made a difference anyway on this topic, but I just am concerned, because these, the health and safety things are real, and like, I can't tell employees, like, for example, that, oh, those things aren't going to be emptied out, but you're going to be expected to use those facilities, like, on a 60-day basis, I mean, because eventually it'll get to a point where it's not good.
The other, so, the other solution that's quick turnaround, like, very quick turnaround, is Matt's allowed to approve things without board approval, below a certain amount of money, and if a bid, he can put out a bid for under that amount, it doesn't have to come here, we don't need no meetings or nothing, and it can happen.
Just for the interim.
Just for the interim.
I can approve $19,999.99.
So if we can get something for that, just to do the essentials, the public spaces, problem solved.
And I would say that, just for the board, I mean, we obviously do have, you know, a budget in place for this, so it's, it is a budgeted expenditure. You start getting into some gray areas, though, if it's like, let's say the cost was $10,000, and you get one month, and then another month, and then I'm, you know, then we're, we're buttoned right up against that, that total, you know, is it the life of the contract, is it the month-to-month amount? I mean, we normally haven't tested the purchasing policy in this way, and I, these are the sorts of things we typically would bring to the board to avoid those sorts of scenarios, you know, I mean...
Like $10,000 a month?
And I, I don't know, I mean, some of that is predicated on, do we get somebody who says, yeah, if I can do that, and I'll start August 1, I mean, I, I don't know.
Because the other contract we had was 17... Was, was that per month, or was it for the two months?
For two months, $17,000 a month for two months.
Oh, okay.
Each month, though.
Right, yeah, okay.
And that wasn't a scaled-down...
And I would imagine that, you know, the, the, again, our, our existing vendor would potentially entertain, like, if we were to say, okay, that we don't, we don't want that level of service, we're gonna, you know, reduce it, if the cost is a concern, like, I, I'm sure we can go back and say, hey, what do you think, and look at this, you know, for a short-term option, you know, I mean, that's, that was kind of what we planned initially, right? And the fact that it went through committee of the whole, and then, you know, we had that three-week gap, is really what created the challenge, and so, you know, if that had been, you know, denied at that point...
Then we had more time.
We would have quickly accelerated, you know, our process, things like that, and probably had a special meeting to finalize the cleaning, you know, but under the assumption that it was going forward.
So because of that, that's why we're here right now, in a time crunch, and we only got 10 days to make, make our minds up.
Not that, I, I'm not deflecting, you know, responsibility for figuring this out and finding a solution, it's just, I wanted everybody to realize that this, this is, you know, rock-meet-hard place, I mean, we're trying to figure this out, but there's not a lot of easy solutions, and, you know, we're, we're gonna do the best we can to figure this out one way or another.
Sheriff, did you have something you wanted to add?
There's nothing saying you can't go against what you did last week and go, go the other way on it. I think there's, it's an obvious choice, it, you, you have the supplies, you have the manpower, to make it work, maybe on a scaled-back version or not, but there's nothing saying you can't do that, because nine days isn't going to get you anywhere.
No.
Of any quality, and by the time they get trained, they're gone, possibly, so, there's nothing saying you can't just...
I wouldn't even take that job if I was a vendor for that little bout of time.
There's nothing, it sounds like you guys have tabled that idea to me, but I, I went back here with the hearing, too, so...
Well, we didn't say, but it was brought off the consent agenda, and now we're here.
Another option could be potentially to, where we could look at a, a special meeting, and maybe at the very least set a do-not-exceed price or something, and figure it out for two months.
And then it would be just the public spaces, not the private spaces, to make it a cheaper price, to where it'd be scaled back, to avoid all the, the dangerous stuff, the health stuff.
Yeah, if you scaled back from private offices... Public areas, things like that, I'm, I'm certain we could drive that...
Well, and the staff restrooms.
All restrooms, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would not include...
I mean, they're not all public, but, I mean, that's right, don't use the staff restroom.
You contacted these other cleaning facilities, they would have to come through and look to see...
Yeah, I mean, and normally with those, we do, like, with RFPs, for example, we do manually walk-throughs usually.
That 10 days is going to be enough for these companies to come in?
Well, and how much time are, I guess, what I don't understand is you say, go out to bid, like, we've gone out to bid for our services in the courts, you have to give a deadline for the bid, we're gonna go out to bid tomorrow, which is Friday, and say the bid's due Monday? I mean, like, what, what are we talking about?
No, I mean, I guess, what I'm saying is that, for the, the contacts I've had, I mean, we've reached out just to get a sense of, like, hey, you know, not necessarily a two-year agreement, but like, would any, would you be willing to come in and clean for, you know, a two-month timeframe?
Well, right, but they have to bid on it and say, like...
We could get quotes.
Well, I guess I'm using the word bid, to get a quote, you have to say when the quotes due, and they have to look at something, they're not just gonna say, okay, well...
Yeah.
Well, no, and I think that's part of the challenge, right, is to get quotes, even if we said by Wednesday next week, we have to get quotes from everybody, get everybody out here to take a look, I mean, they're just, from the, from the time it happened, there just has not been a lot of time to be able to, to figure this out.
The frustrating thing about this whole thing is, I talked to you a couple months ago about getting quotes. If that would have happened, we would have had somebody probably secured for now, knowing that, you know, whatever was going to happen, we'd have at least somebody secured. I did send you an email that you did not reply to, with three cleaning companies, I don't know which one you related to, but, one of them would be willing to come in the interim, and that was found by someone else. That company was found by someone else that gave it to me, they talked to them about coming in on the interim. So if it's just two months...
Yeah, I mean, if it's the first email I had, I, I emailed them three days ago and haven't heard anything.
Pardon me?
If it was the first email you sent me, I've emailed them three days ago and haven't heard anything, I mean, and with respect to the...
This was sent to you, yes, Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, okay, and, and the other thing, I guess I would just say, is that, like, in terms of getting quotes, you know, with respect to the decision that was at the June committee of the whole, it wouldn't have made sense for me to get quotes if the consent agenda item coming forward in July was to move forward with a short-term agreement with our existing contractor. Like, I'm not going to get quotes to say, hey, would you give me a quote when we've already, the, the consent agenda item is to move forward with someone else. I mean, that was the, that was the discussion at the COW.
So it was determined that we were going to vote, put it through.
Was, this will guide what we do, you know, so, I mean, I think we, we had articulated that.
That's why we have the COW, because if there's anything you do not know, we need to discuss it here and get it resolved, so that when we push it through, that it will be voted on and moved forward. The COW is for discussing these issues, not waiting to the Board of Commissioners meeting, and then discussing it and turning it down. We do it here at the COW. Otherwise, why do we have a COW if we wait to our VOC meeting to turn it down? We have, and, and we have the agenda aha- ahead of time, so if you wanted to discuss something with somebody that maybe you think has a difference with you, reach out to them, discuss it, we're all open to each other. I, I think communication's a great thing.
All right, so what solution are we putting forward?
That's what I was just gonna ask. Thank you, Sam.
I mean, I'm happy to circle back with the options we've discussed, bring those forward to, I mean, we could probably set a special meeting if we needed to.
And then worst-case scenario, reach out to our current vendor and get under that approval price, to where it doesn't have to come here, and it'll take care of the essentials.
I guess, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, and I guess we can have this discussion, is that if we were able to get existing vendor to continue on for, under the purchasing limits that I'm allowed to approve, is there any, you know, making sure everybody's agreeable to that?
I am.
I don't think there needs to be a formal vote on that, really, but...
Yeah, Ryan is not saying nothing about that.
I get that.
I'm with you, Sam.
I mean, that was, at that point, I will chart out a path, and we'll figure something out, and we'll make sure that the cleaning that needs to get done, gets done.
When does the official RFP process begin?
Well, we have, you know, reached out this week to confirm everything with departments, elected offices, and other buildings, to make sure we've got that squared away, I would imagine we'll probably have an RFP poster within the next week.
That'll go 30 days.
Yes.
When we did the... We usually did an RFP process for the class comp, so I think that was 30 days? I thought that came back pretty quick.
Actually, I think it was a little longer, those 30 days, yeah, I think we did 45.
Time is fine.
So are we wanting to keep the description of the cleaning the same, or do we want to...
I mean, my guess is it may, it may be pared back some.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Because otherwise, I wouldn't be able to approve it, but I'm, I'm, I'm confident that we can find a path.
All restrooms and public areas.
They're all restrooms and public areas.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess the one thing to keep in mind, and I don't know, you know, we'll, we'll chart this out, but like, sheriff's department dispatch, I mean, those are 24/7 operations, I mean, so maybe there's, maybe we need to look at that a little differently.
And Sheriff, we still can't use the, the president, the inmates, because of their, they haven't been...
You don't have enough staffing to do.
Don't have enough staffing, yeah.
Staffing, inmates, I should say.
Right.
All right, so if there are no further questions, I entertain a motion. Do we have one?
I don't think we need one.
No, no.
Is there any further discussion on this topic?
Horse is dead.
All right, so we're, we're going to public comment, again, this is open for three minutes, is this for anything you want to wish to discuss?
Hold on, she's got...
Wait, we're not voting on that?
What is there to vote on?
I mean, because technically speaking, at committee of the whole, we're not able to...
That's correct, but...
To vote.
So it's moving forward, isn't it, one?
We don't have nothing to move for, we're still got stuff to figure out.
The key, I guess, was, is that, just understanding from the whole board's perspective, if we were able to find a solution, whether it's our current vendor or otherwise, and we were able to stay under purchasing policy, was the border key with that? And the sense I have is, yes.
Do we want to go around and ask everybody?
We have to have a clean.
We just have to wait about you. Do we have their bathrooms cleaned, their public areas cleaned?
Yeah, see, Joyce has got a good idea that gets consensus for what Matt's gonna do, that way, there's no question. We go around the room, and if there's a majority, one way or the other, that's what we do as a group.
Upstaying.
And he's abstaining.
All right, so we got one abstaining, all those in favor say aye.
I think a roll call.
Just real quick, as a, as a thought, there's a privileged motion reconsidered, you can reconsider the vote on a motion that's previously passed or failed, as long as you were on the winning side, do we, does anybody want to reconsider that motion previously? That would be of the four of us that voted against it.
I mean, just given the current situation, we can, we can set up a special meeting and reconsider the vote on that motion, and then essentially you say, based on current information or current situation, you would pass or fail that.
Right.
Well, I think that we could get it done, although it's expensive.
That's kind of what I was thinking, but I didn't want anybody to think that there wasn't, there, there is a way that you can bring that back, even if it's been voted on, as long as it hasn't been acted upon.
Sounds good to me.
So, if all else fails,
We can do it.
we can reconsider that.
Okay.
So, do we still need?
I was just stating that if all else fails,
I, I, I got that.
We can have an emergency meeting next week and reconsider.
That way, everything is safe.
I think we were asking if, if, as a board, if it's okay
To agree, to, uh, to let Matt Okay.
Look into it.
Yeah.
Find somebody who's willing to do it.
Knowing that it could involve discussions with our current vendor, and based on the decision last time, I wanted to check with everybody before I did that.
This is the essentials, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The next two months.
Doing that.
So, do we wanna go around and see who wants to do this?
A roll call for that.
I mean, it could be another option, too. I mean, I, we, we might look at temp service providers. I mean, there are things we're gonna look at, but...
'Cause it's, doesn't really need a vote.
Doesn't need a vote, just does it?
Right.
I mean, it doesn't, if it's...
I guess the key is just if anybody has any objection to me doing that.
I do not.
I do not.
Nope.
Good enough for me.
All right, so we're gonna go back into public comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for three minutes?
Marky Mark. My colleague, Kaskanyi resident, Jefferson Township. This whole cleaning thing makes my blood boil, okay? Is it a surprise that we have a contract renewal coming up for a, a service, a vendor for this county, all of a sudden, we don't know about? Or did we not know about it two years ago when we granted the last contract? Why are we coming down to nine days before a deadline, and we have no plan? That's not acceptable. That puts a burden on the county. It could cost us more money in the long run, because we haven't planned ahead. Now, we might have to get somebody in here who can just charge whatever they want, because we're in an emergency crisis. It's not a crisis, but it's, it's a spot we should not be in. I don't understand why we don't have the quotes in. I hear ads on the radio every day about cleaning companies trying to find more business. I know they're in the area. We gave the last contract out to a lower bid. That bid ended up costing more than the highest, the other bid that came in. It was substantially higher. So, now we're paying that current company higher than we were before, the company that was going to not get the bid. And now we're stuck in a spot. You look confused. Don't look confused. This, this, well, we're paying $199,000, roughly, nine, $196,000 right now. Oh, you're correct. The last bid was $186,000. The lower bid was $186,000. So, we're paying more now than we would have been paid if we had stuck with that contract. Overall, it's a little cheaper. I understand math. I do it all day. I just don't like what's happening here. It looks bad. We need to find what's happened, and we need to fix this, because this is embarrassing to me. Thank you.
Floor's still open.
I think the reason why they didn't put out bids yet is because the new part of the courthouse that's being redone, it's hard to bid on it, because we didn't have anything in place to know exactly what you were gonna be cleaning, to give an accurate bid. We wanted to give the companies an opportunity to see it, you know, like, the bathrooms done, what, what they would actually be cleaning as it progressed, and getting the finished details. I think that's what the original reason was.
Yeah. With sweeping, what's been up, being more counters, those sorts of things. Like, even now, you can't tell what's gonna be a counter home, is it?
No.
All right, so if there's no further public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and close the floor. Then we'll go around the room, and if there's any board member comments or announcements, announce the time to do so. Jim, any other thing?
Well, we had a leaders' meeting, and in that leaders' meeting, we, the fire department was discussed at some length, and I think, I think we, I hope that we're making some headway here on getting the townships and the villages together so that we can talk about what we need to do in the future for our fire coverage. So, that was at some length. Roseanne was there, Matt was there, it's some discussion. And I, I have high hopes in us that we can unite as a county for a minimum service that will service the county, whether it's through townships or whatever it takes. But we have to have funding for the fir, for one thing, unity for another thing. If we don't have unity, you can hang it up. We're done. And it's just kind of like what Mark was saying. It, it puts this county in a position where I'm ashamed. So, my thing is, going forward, we need to unite and start being professionals in what we do in this job. And start making good decisions for this county. I get a lot of comments out there, people that aren't, they aren't satisfied with this cleaning company. A lot of comments about the fire department. What are you guys doing about it? Well, we can't do anything. We can't? We can't try to unite together? Are we gonna go to Washington, DC? Thank you.
All right, going around. Anyone else?
I just want to reiterate that, um, as a board, we need to come together at our COW meetings. And this is where we need to discuss things, so we don't end up in the situation we're in now with the cleaning services. Should have been addressed two months ago with it in the COW. So, just our communication here needs to be a little bit more, instead of just maybe not saying anything and then just pushing things forward. That's all I'm asking for. I think we should utilize it a little bit better.
I guess to your point, I did bring up things at the last COW, so, and I voted no. No, I'm not directing it. It's okay.
Chair Johnson?
I've got nothing.
I have nothing.
Move to adjourn.
I, yep.
Okay. You don't have anything?
No, it's all right.